Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, September 2nd, 2014. My name is Scott Bugby. To my right is Jim Leehan. To my left is Jeff Blumbo. To Jeff's left is Jack Hathaway, our Town Administrator, and to his left is Marion Harrington, our Executive Assistant. Please be advised, this meeting will be audio and videotaped. Jack, could you read the agenda for us?
The agenda. Thank you. Meeting of the Norfolk Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, September 2nd, commence at 7:00 PM. Town Ministry report, first order of business, including action items. Open discussion for public comment for water and solid waste rates. Please consider an appointment to the Energy Committee. Please consider a block party on Day Street on September 13th. And an agenda item that was added at the end of last week, please consider your right of first refusal on a Chapter 61A property located at 36 Needham Street. We have discussion items, the Board of Selectmen goals, and then we have executive session regarding collective bargaining and litigation.
Great.
And then a second, sorry, hit a second item regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate.
Thank you. Okay. So I have to formally open the public comment, or is it...
You do.
Okay. Do I have a motion to open discussion for public comment for the water and solid waste rates?
So moved.
Second. Any questions? It's open for a minimum of 120 days. Folks who are interested would, I guess, email their comments to the DPW? Is that correct, Jack?
It is.
Okay. Any questions? Comments?
They can email me as well, but it would be preferable if they would email them directly to the DPW.
Okay.
So it's dpw@virtualnorfolk.org.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We also have Mr. Belling would like to be appointed to the Energy Committee. Can I get a motion for that?
Make the motion to appoint Bill Belling as a member of the Norfolk Energy Committee.
Second.
Any questions, comments? We appreciate his volunteering.
Absolutely.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Belling.
Yeah, thank you very much. And we also have, I think it's an annual request to approve a block party on Day Street on September 13th, 2014. I believe the chiefs have approved that?
Yes.
Okay. No problem. Can I get a motion for that?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last of our action items is the 61A property at 36 Needham Street.
Correct.
So...
Thank you, Jack. This is just a residential, it's really a residential sale of property, and it's located at 36 Needham Street, owned by a family who was selling the property, being purchased by another resident, a couple of residents.
Thank you.
Because it is in Chapter 61A property, it is a, I should just tell you, there's a single-family home on the property, and they have the intention of continuing it, operating it as a single-family home. But it is about 20 acres, and the current owner has it, put it under Chapter 61A for the purposes of, and they have a forestry plan and sell firewood at the property and enjoy the benefits of that. So now they will, but they're looking to, the new property owners are looking to continue with that Chapter 61A property designation and obviously continue owning it as a single-family residence. So the law requires, there was a lot of debate about this, but the law requires that when 61A property is transferred, that town has the right of first refusal. So bring it forward to you, because you have the authority to either, you have the authority to continue it and obviously bring it to a town meeting vote within 120 days, or you have the authority to pass on that right. So I did give you a copy of the purchase and sale, just because you would, you know, as you've seen in previous situations, we did it like in the Weaver property, we actually step in as the buyer into the purchase and sale and assume all the rights and conditions that are in that purchase and sale.
Okay.
So it'd be my recommendation that we pass, as this is a single-family residence, and I don't think we really want to get involved in that business, but...
It would seem, yeah, too expensive for affordable housing, right?
I've been involved in a number of 61A considerations, and it should not be the practice of the town to get involved in private sales of individual family homes. I think this was, you said this was a 61A because he did firewood?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I would, I don't think it would serve the town's interest to get in the way of this.
I would strongly agree.
Jeffrey?
Yeah, I don't think I've heard anything to suggest that this would be strategic for the town, so tend to agree.
Okay. All right, so we can make a motion then to pass on the purchase?
I move to, what would be the appropriate language on that, to decline.
To decline on your right of first refusal?
61A opportunity on behalf of the town of Norfolk.
Second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's our action items. We have Board of Selectmen goals. Mary, did we have this? I meant to ask you today what we did last...
We haven't discussed them this year. I didn't bring them last year.
Okay.
Actually, I have. Well, of course, I have them, but...
You have last year?
Mm-hmm. I have the last three years.
I have them. I just...
I didn't bring mine, and I probably have them too. I just didn't find them this afternoon.
I thought it was just...
If you brought your iPad, you'd have them right on your iPad.
Mr. Leehan probably does. Thanks, Jack, for that. I appreciate that little dig. You haven't seen him, Jeff.
We can talk about a few other things if you want.
I've seen them, but I... Okay.
We could kick around. I mean, I looked at last year's, I looked at the last couple of years, and some of them are things that we always try to have, which is, you know, make sure that we are fiscally responsible in terms of the operational considerations of the town. But last year, we tweaked it, and you may remember, Scott. We tweaked it to try and make our goals more strategic.
Yep.
And Jack's goals more implementation.
Operational implementation, right.
And I think we did a decent job of that, and when I looked at them, I thought we did okay for you. But one goal that I'd like us to consider, that I think is uncertain at the top of my priority list, is the public safety complex. We have the appraisal. We're going to talk about that in executive session, but we have rec, we have police, and we have fire that we have to bring this to some resolution. So that's a goal I would like to see the board adopt for this fiscal year, with its hopeful culmination in the spring meeting. Now that we, I think, well, we'll discuss components of this in executive session, but now that we have an understanding of where we can and can't go in this, that has to be a priority for us. It's been far too long. We're throwing money down the tubes. You all know this. I'm preaching to the choir here, but we have an opportunity now, I think, to do something at a substantially lower cost than we ever possibly envisioned. And you know, sometimes you get lucky. I think in this case, we've gotten a little lucky.
That's a good point.
Still going to cost us money. I mean, I'm not, you know, in any way suggesting that it isn't going to be a bite for the town, but it is substantially millions of dollars less than any option we've had before us for the last five or six years.
Yep.
So from my perspective, as the liaison on the public safety, this is a priority for us. We have a chance to fix this at a very reasonable cost. So, but we have, like all things, we have to communicate the pros and cons and the benefits to the folks that vote, and just do our best. They get to decide.
Okay. Makes sense.
So that would be one for me. And the other one that's been on every year has always been fiscal responsibility, you know, to ensure that we manage our budgets appropriately. And I think we've done a pretty good job of that, so. But we need to continue. Jack has a great staff in the Finance Department that do a great job.
Mm-hmm.
Great job. And I'd also like to sort of blend together, and I was thinking about this today, I'm just throwing out ideas, and then you guys go through my three or four, and I'll be quiet. I'd like to sort of revisit our capital strategy. We've got a good chunk of money for capital this year. I'm not convinced we should all spend it in November. I think I'd rather take a little bit of time here and sort of revisit a broader... We have individual strategy, a replacement strategy for major purchases. Jack's done a great job working with the department heads on that. But I'd like to blend them, which we haven't done.
Yep.
You know, blend all of those different components together and look out five years and see how we can get at this in a systematic and prioritized way. So that would be another priority for me.
Yeah, I'd agree. It's gotten kind of sloppy just because we haven't had capital money, so.
Yeah.
We've got some capital money.
Well, you know, when you've got a half a million dollars sitting in the bank for capital, it becomes very easy to spend it.
Yeah.
And I think before we write the checks, I think it would benefit us to blend these different components, including the schools, and prioritize this and get some outside input as to where those priorities are, and then bring that recommendation to spring meeting. Because I don't think we have anything that is urgent for the winter. I mean, nice to have, yes, but I haven't seen anything that will keep us from performing our job between now and May. Do you agree?
I would agree.
And did we get the capital outline committee back together? Was it...
No, we only have one person on the capital.
And it will give us a chance to do that. But before we do that, I think we have to blend each of those. As I say, Jack's got a great handle on each of the departments, but I think we need to blend them and get some consensus from us as to, and the department heads really, not us, but more the department heads, as to where those priorities are. And then let's get the capital outline committee together and really start going through this and get ready for the spring.
Okay.
So that would be a priority for me. So I'll pass the buck now.
Yeah, I think, you know, for me, similar, you're talking about priorities and being proactive, in this case, you know, capital. But in a similar vein with planning, you know, we've got some major projects, perhaps they haven't been formalized. They're maybe ideas at this point, but we've got some talented, committed people that are vetting these ideas presently so that we can understand what the impact might be for the town. So of course, Southwood property, you know, comes to mind, and there's another major development as well that's being studied. So, you know, I think the concept of having a planner in Ray Goff is really starting to, it's starting to pay dividends, in my opinion. I think we're still in a transition period. You know, he's continuing to learn about the town, learn about the regulations here in Massachusetts. Comes from a different state in terms of his body of knowledge, but, you know, we're definitely moving in the right direction. And the goal, I feel, during 2014 into 2015 will be to become more and more proactive in terms of ultimately looking to secure interest and generate interest in development in the town, in the town center in particular. So we have some other things on the plate right now which are taking a significant amount of time and resources, but I see, over the course of the next year, I see us transitioning to bring focus in a proactive way to town center, which has been the elusive goal, I think, for many years for our town. So what that means in terms of what the development, you know, looks like, I guess that's subject to different forums that I think will create to secure input from the residents of the town. But I do believe that that's a goal here. If not for the next one year, certainly the next year and a half or so, I see us moving in that direction to be able to be proactive.
Makes sense. I think that, like you said, Jeff, I think if the Board of Selectmen can do anything to help that, that would be great. I think it's our job to, like you said, solicit public input, try to get the vision, you know, buy into the vision of what people's vision really is. So, I mean, that makes perfect sense.
Yeah, I would agree, Jeff.
We should think about the master plan. I mean, related, we should think about the master plan.
Yeah. I mean, I would like to see, my hope is that Ray becomes more integrated into the, well, he will become more integrated and already has, but continue to integrate himself into our planning components. And I know he's looked at the master plan. I know he has some thoughts on it. And, you know, as he continues to settle in and learn more and more, I'd love to see him proactively work on that. He brings an objective viewpoint to it, you know. He has no luggage, you know. Sometimes a first set of eyes is a good thing. You know, I, it's, I don't know what the vision should be anymore, Jeff. You know, I thought I did. I mean, I know what the potential is, and I think sometimes we confuse the potential with the vision. But most of the folks that have given input to me like where we are. You know, they like, I mean, sure, we'd like to see more services and... But the reality is, we have very limited commercial, I mean, our biggest opportunity really is not downtown. It really is down on 1A. And yet, we've spent so much time talking about downtown. At some point, there has to be a recognition as to, you know, what we are, what the community really wants and what the community wants to settle on. It's a beautiful, I mean, I think it's a beautiful town center. Could we do more? Would I like to see some things renovated? Sure, but we don't own them. They're privately owned. We don't get a vote on that. I'd love to see some small businesses. I wish I could come up with some ways that we could attract. I know we've had some failed starts.
Yeah, I think, I mean...
I mean, we have a new owner of this. You know, maybe...
Well, I'm seeing some light at the end of the tunnel.
Yeah, I know. I think, you know, unfortunately, I think some of this is still under executive session.
Yeah.
So we really can't talk about it. But there may be a light at the end of the tunnel on this one.
Agreed. I mean, I think, you know, the Southwood property, as well as the center of town, I would think it's a fair statement to say that there's unfinished business. I mean, in Southwood, I mean, you've got a remediation site, so it needs to be cleaned up. Needs to be, needs to be remediated in a lot of ways, and, you know, if we can come up with a responsible plan in terms of development with the right party. So hopefully, something will shape up here over the next few months. Over there at Southwood, in a similar vein here in town center, I mean, it's clear, given the, given the land clearing and such that has been done, and that it's unfinished business for the town. And I've been in the town 11 years, so I can't say that I really remember what this town center was like before all the, you know, the activity began.
I do.
But I would think that...
I remember it.
I would think that, you know...
Marion remembers it.
So, I mean, what's been done is very positive, and I think you'd find broad consensus that it's very positive, the development that's been done. But, you know, once again, we have some fairly large parcels of land that have been, you know, cleared of all vegetation with the exception of, you know, hay fields and grass.
Well, if some of these pieces come together that we've been working on, I think it holds some interesting opportunities for us. We can talk about Southwood. Our last meeting in Southwood, I think, was the most productive meeting we've had. Now, the proof of the pudding will be the next meeting, which is, I think, several weeks away. He's not coming in tomorrow. Tomorrow, by the way, we don't really need to attend because it's, the committee's just going to discuss what they're going to bring forward to us. There's nothing on Southwood on the agenda for tomorrow. But if the next meeting that George is at, if he is still in the same place that I think he left with, and we can start to nail down some concrete things, this is becoming more attractive. The numbers, the financials on this are starting to look better and better. And the biggest concerns, schools and so on, we, again, if he stays with what we recommended, is not a concern. Because it is currently zoned for restricted age. You know, Southwood is currently zoned that way. And we've migrated back to that strategy. So we'll see if it holds.
I was just going to say, and people who are listening may be concerned that something big happens at Southwood. If there is a big change to, other than just pure age-restricted housing, if it does go down a different path, you know, working with the committee, town meeting will have approval of that.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, yeah, I mean, well, these meetings we've been having have been public meetings. I mean, anyone could attend, so we're not talking about anything secret. But we've had five or six meetings, I think, with this working committee that we put together. I know, Jeff, you've been at several, and you attended one. I've been at several. So we've all participated. It's been a good working group, trying to talk through some of the issues associated with the Southwood project. And it's continuing to make progress, but it has to work for the town. You know, if the numbers don't say that it is a benefit, a financial benefit to our community, then this is something that should not, you know, we shouldn't acquiesce to this. And after the last meeting, it started to trend in a more favorable direction. So we'll see how it ends up.
I mean, it's really an exciting time for the town. I mean, with the public safety building, or the prospects of a public safety building, at least for police and such, and regional dispatch, like we were talking about, and, you know, the potential here for Southwood, what we have already taking place on Route 1A. We have some additional development.
Medical building is getting very close.
Yeah, we have, you know, the Dunkin' Donuts and golf station, convenience store, et cetera, going. It looks like that project is very close. I know they've cleared the site, and it's like they've done some of the initial site work there, so they're serious here. They're, I think they're going to begin construction fairly soon, so.
Yeah. It's been the busiest summer I can remember in a lot of years. Usually, it's kind of quiet. I mean, our meetings haven't been full, but our days have been full. It's been a lot going on. But if it, you know, we'll see. We're working hard at it. You guys are working hard at it on the planning board. Keep it going. I know that sounds a little clandestine, but several of these things are still in executive session, so we...
What else, Jack? Do you have?
What other goals, guys? I mean, I wrote down, obviously, the fiscal, the capital, public safety, water is another one.
Oh, yeah. Right, thank you.
We need to deal with...
Water source, yeah.
We play a role, not the only role by any means, but certainly a role in the two major developments that are potentially before the board. You got, Jeff, you mentioned continued integration of the planner, and especially around zoning and the master plan.
Master plan update, potentially.
Affordable housing plan has to be rewritten, but I think Sue Jacobson's going to take on that responsibility with the Municipal Housing Trust, but it has to get done.
On the HR side, Scott and I are working on, you know, looking at, obviously, you know, reviewing the contracts that are up this year, but also looking at...
Which ones are up, Jack? Yours?
Mine. I don't think any of the collective bargaining...
Decent fire.
No, they're not.
They're a couple of years away.
So I think we're good on that. One thing Scott, I've asked Scott to look at is just look at, and he's joined, doesn't cost us anything, but he's joined the Mass Municipal MMPA. It's the HR branch of the MMMA, Mass Municipal Association. Anyway, looking at, they've created a database, and I've asked Scott to pull that database and look at our just compensation across, you know, whether it's collective bargaining or the personnel employees, and just see how we're doing compared to other towns. Helps us just have discussion. You know, when people approach, department heads or employees approach him or myself or the department head, we can have an intelligent conversation about where everybody stands. So that's something Scott's doing this year.
Also, can we add anything, like, any opportunities on like energy conservation? I know, you know, we obviously have the solar, but in terms of either lighting, I know Rob, you know, passionate Rob and everybody, I know we have the Energy Committee looking at stuff like that, too. Is there anything we can do as selectmen to facilitate that, help that? Big gains to be had? I don't know if there's any big gains to be had.
Yeah. Well, I think from a facilities point of view, Ingrid Lardy, Dr. Lardy and I, the school superintendent, have looked at whether or not we're going to combine, I think we're going to seriously look at combining facilities departments over the next year, so beginning in the 2015-16 budget. I think it's time for us to do that. I mean, I think both of us have done, the departments have kind of professionalized, if you will, the facilities departments. And I think now we can get some economies of scale and also, you know, look at their, the school custodians, and whether or not they can maintain the, you know, probably with additional staff, but maintain the municipal facilities as well, save us some money on our contracts for TLC or whatever, you know, vendors we have.
So how, can you talk about that a little more? How do you see that working?
Well, I just, you know, Bob Bullock and Ron Bain, both, you know, they're building commissioners and electrical inspector, but they, but they maintain the buildings, they're in charge of the buildings on the municipal side, so the five municipal buildings. On the school side, you know, Toby Lyons and his staff maintain the two elementary schools. I think as we're, you know, we've got some retirements coming. I'm not sure when, but coming on both departments. But I think, so it may be a good time to put the two departments together and, you know, both for, you know, having a single management oversight, kind of looking at the buildings and maintaining a facility, you know, a good capital planning schedule for facilities maintenance. That would be one thing that I'd want to have done consistently for all seven buildings. But then also, just look at the cleaning staff and, you know, because the school obviously uses staff people to maintain, custodians to maintain the buildings, whereas we use, you know, other than Ron, Ron doing, yeah, his emergency work, which he doesn't, you know, we don't need to talk about. But we have, yeah, we have services come in and clean the buildings and empty the trash and all that stuff. So Ingrid and I have just had the conversation of, let's look at, see if we can combine those two departments and, you know, make a best of, best of breed between the two. Whether we use custodians or, you know, maybe the answer would be, I'm sure it probably wouldn't be, but use a service for both.
Do other towns do that, Jack? Do you work, you know, where they have the facilities slash schools, or they kind of separate?
Yeah, I mean, I think Walzly has, you know, huge, granted, they're on a whole different scale, but they have a facilities that manage all their buildings.
All the facilities.
It's not uncommon.
You know, Ron, Ron Bain does, he spends 30 hours a week on facilities, so he's only 10 hours electrical inspector. So, and then Bob, Bob does a lot of project work for the facilities, so it's hard to really know how many hours he spends. And, but between the two of them, they spend a lot of time doing it. So I just, something we'll look at, you know, obviously, we've got to see, you know, both where the staffs and either, you know, municipal side and the school side, where they, where they see their careers going. We're not trying to bump anybody out, but we're just also trying to plan for the future and...
Would it, not to start anybody getting all worked up or anything here, but would it make sense to even roll in the zoning enforcement component to that, and taking a look at how Ray might play a role in that?
Could.
I mean, because if you're going to expand the maintenance component, which is a huge job with all of the buildings, you bring the schools into play, that's a big job, along with the permitting, you know, component that's inherent in that job. It might make sense to look at the zoning component. I know we talked about that, and we made it even part of the job description that we had with Ray, but just as this all migrates through, that might be a component we want to look at as well.
Yeah. No, I think, I mean, I think we'll look at the components of all their jobs, and that's one important piece of that, of municipal side that we could look at and see if it fits better someplace else with Ray or...
Are there any, may I, Mr. Scher...
Yes, please.
Are there any, seeing we're in this kind of a conversation, your opinion, Jack? Are there any major organizational flaws in the way we operate right now? there any major organizational flaws in the way we operate right now?
Flaw may be a strong word for this one, anyway.
Things we could, a structure that would be more efficient or better, give us better results. Are we structured correctly?
Well, let me, let me throw something out. The finance department, we're structured correctly bylaw-wise, but for the past six, seven years, we haven't had a finance director. We had one after I left, that didn't, that was a short-term solution.
If I remember well.
Yeah, so then we, then we didn't refill that position, so now we have a town accountant, a treasurer, and an assessor, all reporting to me. And we really need to, you know, Julie Shevko has done, you know, in accounting, has done a great job, Cheryl's done a great job in treasury, and John has done a great job, John Neese has done a great job in assessing all individuals. We are, Julie has already announced that she's gonna retire a year from January, a year from January, so it's less, less than eighteen months.
Have we started trying to talk her out of it yet?
Yes, but that's not gonna happen.
Come on, Jack.
Unfortunately, her assistant's gonna retire a month before that, so. So as part of the sixteen budget, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and hire an accountant, a finance director next July, or shortly thereafter, so that there's, there's an overlap between Julie and the.
She's gonna be a huge loss.
She is gonna be a huge loss. She has, she's, I'll leave it at that, she's gonna be a huge loss. So anyway, so the answer to your question is, with Julie leaving, what I would like to do is get a finance, you know, get a finance director back in. And whilst that really means to me is that we'll have a finance director overseeing all financial aspects of the town, obviously still reporting to me, but, but it'll be a more efficient, having one person manage all of that, rather than having me manage the three different departments is just, there's a, there's an inefficiency there that, it won't cost us, you know, it'll cost us a little bit of money to have a finance director, rather than someone who's a town accountant.
Not a lot if you're transitioning those jobs, I mean, you can restructure that whole process with a finance director to a certain degree.
Right, right. And it'd just be a whole lot better to have somebody who's in the finance department every day managing all three divisions. It makes, that would make a lot more sense.
Back to facilities, in terms of, you know, the data that exists presently to help, you know, do a pro forma type of assessment in terms of what the world would look like if the responsibilities were combined and such, do you feel that we have enough data? It's detailed enough, or do you think that that's something maybe we should be collecting, you know, over the next several months as we start to take a closer look at this?
I think we will need to spend some time collecting some data and kind of understanding, you know, Ingrid and I'll have to have conversations, understanding each other's world a little bit better, you know, and, you know, certainly she'll have to under, she'll, as we, if we're able to put this together, she'll have to understand what, what work and expectations we have that are different than the school world. I mean, the custodians, you know, obviously have all afternoon, other than programs that are going on to do their work, whereas we work, you know, longer, longer into the night, when we may have committees and stuff like that going on, so. I was gonna come up with my smart aleck answer, zinging your, your need for an engineering data collection, but I'll leave it.
There was a pause.
Pretty good, Jack. Held your tongue. You didn't really, though, he didn't really, Jeff, you didn't notice he dinged you anyways.
Worth exploring how we might be able to work more closely together on the HR side as well with the schools.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, this isn't about, you know, command and control, this is more of how we can use our resources more efficiently collectively to each other's benefits.
Yeah, and actually, now that you say that, even, even the whole finance office, we've had that discussion several times over my tenure, and we probably will have, actually have that again.
I mean, if it increases efficiency on both sides, why would, I mean, you know, relationships are good, there'd be no reason why not to take a look at that.
Well, we're fortunate in that the proximity, all these buildings are very close to one another, so that in terms of dispatching your resources, it may be some real benefits to having a larger pool combined, that you can pull folks away from the town buildings and put them on the schools during certain windows of opportunity they have, they have certain things that need to be, you know, be done while the students aren't there, what have you. There could be some real benefits in that respect, but, I mean, it's just some of the stuff from project engineering is, as you.
Well, it works well with the IT, right? You're still sharing with the schools and the IT, right?
Yep.
Yeah. It's been good.
You know, and that, that's been great. Michael Yang has done a great job. You know, in a perfect world, I think Ingrid and I would both say we need a little more, you know, if we could replicate Michael, that would be awesome, but he's, we're certainly, you know, head and shoulders above where we were a year or two years ago, and depending on where the technology goes, both in the school and here, you know, we'll look at that, obviously, every year and see if we need to expand that a little bit, but we're in a, we're in a great place with that, and that has worked. I haven't had, I haven't heard anybody saying, you know.
They're not getting the services they need, or they're tensing, right?
Right, you know, the schools doing this, or the, or the schools saying the town's stealing this, or, you know, which sometimes happens.
Can happen when you share resources, right, it's always in.
So that has worked out really well.
Could we, could we get Mr. McGee to come join us at one of our meetings coming up? He's done some phenomenal work this summer, been incredibly busy, and I think it would be good for us, as well as folks at home, to hear what's, what's gone on, and give us a recap of what he's gotten accomplished and what he hopes to finish up on.
Sure, and I, just as a, one of the things that I wanted to mention in my kind of quick notes later in the night was, you know, he's obviously got, I'm sure everybody's seen it, the roundabout here at the Avery Square Roundabout is now under full construction, so they're putting the cobblestones in, that should take, probably take the better part of the week, if not into early next week to get that done, although I heard they're gonna have a bigger crew there tomorrow, so that's, that'll be great, and they are gonna put a one-way, they're gonna have a little bit of a detour. I understand, if my recollection is right, they're gonna, you're not gonna be able to come from the Main Street Roundabout down to the smaller roundabout for about a week. And really what we want, we're trying to avoid is the big trucks coming down in front of the church, and then having to do a two-hundred-and-seventy-degree.
Down to one-fifteen.
Turn onto one-fifteen, because that's when they're getting caught up, and their big wheels are running over the roundabout, and we need the roundabout to stay secure, so, so we'll send them around, they'll come down Independence, and then they'll be able to do a straight shot onto one-fifteen. So there will be a little bit of pain coming here. But he's got that going, he's got, this week, he's got King Street and Maple under construction. He's gonna do some work up on Fruit Street in the next, if he didn't, hasn't started that already, that's coming up, and he's got a whole bunch of intersection corrections that are going on the next couple of weeks as well. He's not ready, that lake, lake's gonna be later in the fall, I need to talk to him about that, and I've been worried since May that, that that would keep slipping, but, I don't know, we'll bring him in, and, I mean, I can talk to him and give you an update, but we'll bring him in and talk about that, I don't, it's not imminent. I think we're still a little worried about a little bit of pushback on that one. We'll see.
He's done a lot, he's got a tremendous amount of work done.
Busy summer.
Yeah, sidewalk, oh, and he's working on sidewalk on King Street, too, so we're getting a sidewalk from the school down to that first neighborhood, which, you know, is at least a good start, because the kids from, you know, Blueberry and that neighborhood will walk, they'll cut through the woods and, you know, but, I don't have junior high kids anymore, but you'd see the kids walking up King Street with all the traffic coming and going, and so he's got that sidewalk. So there'll be a crosswalk right in front of the school, and then kind of an elevated sidewalk on the, I guess that would be the south side of King Street, walking down to that neighborhood. So that'll be nice, that'll be, it's been a long time coming, too.
So that's how it's gonna be done with an elevated sidewalk, because it's steep, you know?
It is steep, yeah, he's gonna obviously have a fence, fence or wall he's gonna have along the sidewalk, too, to, to make sure it's not a dangerous elevation.
It's not the easiest of streets to install sidewalks, so I, I've been looking at it for years, thinking about how, how we're gonna do it.
I'm glad he's got a plan.
Yeah, and he's met with the neighbors, he's, he's good at working that out. Tucker from Midway Branch or the Medway's been, I don't wanna say a war zone, but that's been a project for now about a month, and.
On trees, or, he's doing a lot of, I haven't gone down there, but, because I see the signs.
Yeah, I've been down there a couple of times with him, and it's, you know, and sensitive to the people, you know, and he's sensitive to the people there, too, it's because it's, you know, it is a big change, he's, he's not widening the road, he's putting the road back right where it was, but he is taking trees that were encroaching on the road, either root systems or trees themselves, and he's taking down trees that, you know, the road is affecting the root system, or I should say the roots are affecting the road, he's taking those down, too, so that, you know, we're not having a tree come down in the middle of winter on the power lines or on somebody's house, or just in the road, so he's, it is a visual impact, obviously, when you go down that road, but I think the work that they're doing, you know, putting loom down and making it, I think most of the residents are happy with it.
Has it been feedback to the country?
Yeah, and I witnessed Bob having a very good, he's very good at that, very, you know, conversation about, you know, working with the, it was a couple in this case that he said he, you know, he would work with them and make it right, and, you know, you know, there are things that he had to do to make it safe, and in the end, he tried to convince them that they'll be happy, and then they walked away, you know, shook hands and walked away, it wasn't, it was good.
It was a dangerous road.
It was a dangerous road, and I think it looks great, you know, we'll see the.
Take a drive down there.
The port of the finished product.
He received some kudos from one of the neighbors, residents over in the Winston Road area, because Turner has come up during a few sequential planning board meetings, so we've had a pretty good contingent of residents present for the public hearings. They weren't really public hearings, but I think people were concerned about, you know, Turner potentially opening to Christina State, so.
Oh, right.
So, yeah, there were some very positive comments from one particular resident in appreciation of the work on Winston.
Good.
Yeah.
That was a battle, too, that was.
I understand.
As I know, you know. That one's in the review there.
What else you have for us, Jack?
So do you wanna, Mary and I can put down kind of what we've talked about for goals and send those out to you, and then maybe the next meeting we'll.
Finalize them, sure.
Continue that and.
Yeah.
You should add, I don't know if you're putting it down as a goal, but we talked about it a lot, is this combining of resources with the schools, exploring different opportunities, financial, HR, as well as management facilities, facility management.
Got it, definitely, I'm doing it, no matter if you have a goal or not, so.
Thanks, Jack, I appreciate your support. This contract's up, though, right?
You could do them, Mike.
Paychecks will be in the mail.
Let's send them for training.
You want a Visio diagram, too? Visio diagram, yeah, Visio next, right?
Cole sent me a note, I think copied Jim as his liaison, just talking about budgets, and one of the things that he was just sharing with us, I took it as a good news, bad news, and okay at the end. The problem is, his sick time budget is exhausted, he's got two individuals, one in an intermittent basis, kind of a family medical leave problem, challenge, another one who's been out since May, a lieutenant who's been out fighting his own medical issues, he's, good news is, he's scheduled to come back the end of this month, hopefully that will stick to that schedule. So, so Cole's message was, he's about eight thousand dollars in the hole on his sick time budget for the year. The good news is, the callback budget is about eight thousand dollars under budget, so, so at the end of the day, we seem to be right on track. So I think, you know, I think he was just giving us a little bit of a warning, but, but at the end of the day, everything seems to be relatively under control. He is looking for his, because we put in the budget, the thirteenth man, so they're gonna start that process of trying to hire that person, that'll be, the goal is for January first start date. McGee, we talked about police, we've had some grievances that haven't gotten to my level, but I think we're coming to a resolution on that, and over the next couple of days, I can give you, I'll, I can give you an update on where we are with that, but that has been a time-consuming challenge.
So, Jack, back to the thirteenth man. In terms of the hometown of the candidate, if you will, for those positions, now this is still a bit new to me, so, you know, just trying to catch up here, but that's an important consideration, correct, in terms of trying to ensure that we have, you know, a pool of people that are in a position to come back.
Yep.
On callbacks when necessary.
We are having a requirement that the person's gonna be in a contingent, either, either in Norfolk ideally, or a contingent, one of the contingent towns.
Okay, so the chief's on board with that?
Yeah.
On that grievance, Jack, the settlement that you had shared as the liaison, is that still, are we close to getting that worked out?
Yep.
That's still viable?
Still hasn't, that hasn't derailed, so, I think I can give you a quick update in executive session, just because we've got some potential litigation, but close to avoiding, so.
Good.
One other thing that I wanted to talk about tonight was just, one of the fun things that Marion and I work on are not only the sign, sign placements around town, delegated, you were nice enough to delegate that to us several years ago. That works well, it's, you know, all the A-frame signs that go up, but the banners. So I just want to make sure that, I don't know if you have any real strong thoughts on banners, but those get to be rather political at times, and we've got, we've, we've been limiting, and I want to go back to it, but we have limited people to having their banners on Town Hill. And, and we slipped from that a little bit because of some trees or whatever, and we let them hang in on that banner on the stairway, there's been a couple on there, and I personally don't think it looks, I mean, it's nice, it's very visible, it's great for the people.
Putting a banner up there, but it detracts from the beauty of the Town Hill, I think.
I think it does, so, so I'm, I want to go back to just having people use stakes on Town Hill. Assume you don't have a problem, I mean.
I completely agree with you. I, I think it shouldn't be where they have them.
And we've always limited to one at a time, right?
Yeah, you don't want to populate it with a bunch of.
No, I don't want.
Distract them from people driving anyways, to be honest, they start to read it, they get that.
Yeah, that's.
Roundabout is dangerous enough, not to sit and try and read all the signs and then have more.
What's the typical duration for those when they go up? How long do they stay up?
That's what we limit them to. Yeah, the bylaw.
And would you say most of them are there for the full two weeks, or that's the exception? More of them.
And they'd like to go longer.
And we have some groups, we have times a year, like right now, where I'll get three requests of. requests or four requests for the same locations at the same time.
Yep.
And we only let two go up, two signs, not banners.
So how do you resolve it?
One banner and sign.
First come, first served.
They have to pick, yeah, first come, and they have to pick a different spot. We have that list that you guys created-
Oh, the signs, sorry.
Yeah, for the signs. The banner, I mean, the, it's still first come.
Well, that's the kind of the purpose of my question, why, you know, two weeks instead of one week, and, and I'm not suggesting it should be changed, but is there enough interest where, for purposes of fairness, that it should be one week to allow, you know, other people that are being excluded because of the two?
I'm just asking.
Yeah, I don't-
I don't know.
Closer to it, certainly, I imagine we all are, honestly.
I just, I think the, the two weeks, I guess I'd have, I'd trouble, I'd have struggled with going less than two weeks, just 'cause, you know, the library book sale, um, you don't wanna have it just up one week, I mean, you wanna have it over a full weekend, and the chances of people seeing it, I think one week is almost too short, you know, you miss your, miss your audience, or you couldn't, you miss a lot, some of your audience.
Just an idea, you could do, uh, you know, maximum of two weeks, and you need to request again after one week, just to make sure there's no other requests or something, to keep a second week. Uh, maybe that's getting too time-consuming in terms of resources to manage that, but, you know, I imagine there's certain weeks when there's significant interest-
Community day.
-in peak weeks or something like that.
Community day for another time.
Yeah, just, just an idea, we can back order, you know, the future.
One kind of longer-term solution that I've, wouldn't mind kicking around, and I'm not sure what the perfect solution is, but, you know, like, Rantham has that sign board, um, other towns have message boards that, with the-
Pineville has something like that by the police station, I think, but maybe it's for them, right?
Yeah.
Keeps the temperature a time, or maybe you could put stuff up on there or something.
Yeah, they do, and they have a message, scrolling message board, um, and I'm not, you know, sure I wanna have an electronic board, but, uh, um, I think it would be good if we had a, you know, granite, nice-looking, uh, I, I love, you know, I love the love, but I really, I like the board in the center of town of Rantham, um, they put it up on that big parking lot they own. Um, I think that'd be a good thing for us at some point, you know?
Get someone to donate it.
Cut.
That would, uh, certainly create more fairness, if you will.
Yeah.
But you can use it for other things, too, town meeting, elections.
Yeah, primaries, everything.
Which is what they do in the Rantham one. We used to have those signs that, when you entered, I, I remember them years and years ago.
Long time ago, yeah.
Where we had them at the entrance to the town, all around, you know, announcing town meeting and election day and things of that nature. Then they disappeared. I, I don't know why or when, but, uh, twenty, twenty-some-odd years ago, those were all at the entrance to all of, all the main streets entering town.
I remember that.
But that's not a bad idea, Jack.
Would you want those back at some?
Well, I think if you had something in the center of town-
Yeah.
-that accomplished the same thing. I, I mean, I don't know that we have to put five signs up on five roads, but I think if you had something in the center of town, like Rantham has, I mean, that is a great location, right at the four-way stoplight, um, something that would look nice up on Town Hill, that would, it's a great idea, and, and gets to your point of fairness.
Yeah, I'm not sure we're the best place to, I mean, I, to me, putting it out in front of Town Hall would be the best, but we don't get as much traffic.
You don't get as much traffic.
Yeah, you don't get much traffic, yeah.
I'm not sure I want it on Town Hill though, either, with people going, trying to go around the roundabouts and, uh, trying to look up at what's going on in the sign board.
Yeah, I think, I think I agree with you.
So I'm not sure we're the perfect spot.
What about, what about, um, somewhere along Main Street by the library, perhaps in between the two roads or something in that area?
Yeah, like right there.
A lot of traffic there, and, and most people will see that.
Yeah.
Um, and that wouldn't be obtrusive or offensive, or create diversions for people in terms of driving.
I think that'd be good.
Yeah, that's, I don't know how you guys see, I think that's, I mean, that's not a heavy hit, you know, I mean, it's not a big expense item, but, you know, I think that'd be a nice public service for folks to keep them informed on different things. I think that would be a great thing.
Could you get like courts on that, Jack, or, yeah, potentially it would cost, you know, or Rantham pay, you know?
I know we looked at one a few years ago, and it was like ten grand for something like what Rantham has, um, now if you wanna do electronic, obviously.
I don't really like electronic, I don't, but-
I, I don't like, I, you know, electronic just doesn't fit an offer to me.
No, I agree.
I mean, I just-
Have to be something that would-
Yeah.
Doesn't necessarily look electronic, yeah.
Yeah, and, and not something that requires a lot of work.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I also don't wanna go out, be out there every Monday morning.
A full-time sign poster.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I got McGee, I think I'm, uh, good until executive session.
Any other, just real quick, any other organization, I know it was kind of a softball to you on the finance thing, but any other organizational issues that are worth talking about? 'Cause I know a year or two ago, we talked about potentially, do, you know, do we wanna reform a charter committee to take a look at how we're organized or things like that? I, I don't know that we need to do that. I mean, charter committee is when you really wanna do major overhaul, uh, in terms of your organizational structure. I'm just wondering if there's something we can tweak. I mean, some of the ideas you've mentioned, the consolidating of, of building maintenance and potentially finance and, and HR would be major wins, I think, for all of us. Uh, finance director, but any, anything else that, in your day-to-day that you think might be worth taking a look at? Don't have to answer it, maybe think about it.
The other one we're, we're working on, and I think you, you've heard this one a little bit, is just, uh, and it's getting delayed a little bit, is, uh, putting the school resource officer at, uh, junior high school.
Right.
Um, we've got an officer who's interested in doing that, um, being a school resource officer, and also teaching, um, life lesson type, uh, you know, internet safety, et cetera, you know, a whole, everything along that type of, uh, thing. Beckett, we actually had an agreement to do it, um, starting in September, and it looks like that's gonna get delayed till probably January, just, uh, as the school works out discussions with the-
Union.
Teachers Union. Um, not the end of the world, um, it'll work out, so, um, hopefully that'll happen. Chuck and I, our thought was, we would let that, um, you know, so the school would then help us pay for that officer, um, while, uh, she is at, uh, the school, and then that would free up our budget to backfill that position, um, when needed. Um, Chuck and I thought we would let that play out for a year, and then, 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 um, potentially come and see if we could add an officer, uh, even though Officer Palladini would still be on the, on the department, uh, she'd be located at the school for, for a good chunk of, you know, 180 days of the year. Um, we would, uh, and we'd have her to do other work and, and be a great resource in the school.
A great idea. Hope, I hope it comes about. It's a great idea. Good for the schools, good for us, that's, that's a real win, and good for the public.
So is this separate from DARE, but, you know, they would work in unison type thing, and-
Same idea as DARE, um, and, you know, probably a lot of overlap, um, although, and, and our DARE is located at the elementary school, um, certainly he has a lot of, Officer Plimpton has a lot of connections, you know, and continues to have a relationship with the, the high school kids, um, but really his focus is on the elementary school.
Yeah.
So it is very much like that, but then it's going to what the junior high and high school kids, um, you know, the challenges they face, um-
Absolutely.
Facebook and-
More than ever.
Great idea.
More than ever.
Oh, yeah.
And the officer in question would be terrific at it.
And it gives, you know, it is, and I mean, I could, I would love to talk about this for an hour, if you'll let me, but, um, it gives her the opportunity to, to interact with kids-
And early, yeah, sooner the better, too, yeah.
She's, she's good at it.
And, uh, you know, get to know them and find, you know, and, and, and not that she's spying on them, but find out what's going on in their lives in a, and, and, and keep a red flag, if, you know, if, when the time is right, um, so it's-
She, she did a session with the Girl Scouts, uh, that was just, she is really good at, at finding a very comfortable way to communicate to kids at any age.
Yeah.
Um, she, she was really good.
She's very talented. I've heard, uh, I've heard that one, I've heard, uh, over at the Senior Center, she, they, they loved it over there, what she, uh, worked on with them. Um, my wife and daughter were part of a, and Marion, part of the RAD program, so it's, uh-
Self-defense, yeah.
Self-defense, um, I have some great, uh, videos of Marion getting attacked by four guys, um, and she fought them off, um, so she-
No comment.
Two of them are on medical leave.
Yeah, that's what Jack was referring to earlier.
They were Franklin officers, so, that's, that's fine.
Rantham too, she doesn't rent them.
Um, so that was, it was, and, uh, and it, just to finish that up, I had one of the officers, a different officer approached me in the, at the station and said, "Are you really gonna, you know, let this resource officer thing happen? 'Cause we don't wanna lose Michelle." Um, so it's great, she's, uh, she is, I'll echo your point, she's just doing a great job.
She is terrific. Lucky to have her, she's really great.
Yeah.
Is, um, is Chuck in a position to backfill if, if that happens, number one, and also if you have potentially a sooner-than-expected retirement? Is he in a position to?
He is.
So that?
Uh, you know, the, and this is, uh, part of the budget, um, uh, not new, but we expanded it a little bit this year, we gave him, uh, he hired a couple extra reserve officers.
Right.
And he was doing that, um, so he has specials who will do details, um, and do miscellaneous things for the department. Um, he has reserve officers who can fill shifts, if there's an open shift that nobody wants to take on overtime, um, and he can have them do, um, much more, uh, regular police activity. They're, they're really full, they're really police officers without having a full-time position. Um, so he has a, a longer list of reserve officers now, that, um, because we, we really, you know-
Get some retirements coming up.
We got, we have a lot of retirements coming up in the police department, um, so we're preparing, um, as best we can for that. Um, and we'll, you know, we're not, we're a little nervous, just 'cause we're losing a lot of, uh-
Experience.
Experience, but, uh, we, that next wave is, uh, is also a very capable, uh, group.
Very capable, it's great.
Does that help you on the budget, Jack? I assume you're losing offices, or pay grades, or letting in younger?
Certainly, uh, you would like to think it would, and it, and it should, and I hope it does, um, but-
Sound like a butt, yeah, that's what's a butt.
But there's also some things that we will, uh, you know, bring in a new, let's just, you know, talk about Chuck, for example, bring in a new chief, you know, you don't always go down.
Yep.
We can make it a goal, we can try for that, but, uh, you know, if we wanna bring in an experienced chief-
Right, it could be the same, yeah, or more.
Or, or backfill if we promote somebody, it's, it's, uh, it's not gonna save us a ton of money. Um, we should save at the, at the, at the staff level, the officer level, um, because we're replacing some guys that are at, at very, you know, 20, 25 years steps.
Right.
Um, so that will, there will certainly be some savings, but we'll have to have some, we'll have some one-time costs. Um, the police, it's not a huge number, but the police have some things in their collective bargaining agreements, uh, for, for paying out, um, unused sick time.
Yeah.
You also have the expenses associated with the old Quinn bill, too, for younger officers.
Yep, so we'll have some savings there, that's right. Um, we'll have new equipment to buy.
Yeah, so-
It washes out.
But it will be, it will, you know, it won't, we won't be flushing cash, but it should be, in some ways, we'll see some budget relief. Yeah, I, I replaced a couple of department heads, and I had Korean intentions of saving a ton of money.
No, that's true.
Um, an interim doesn't save you any money, uh, lots of times either, 'cause you're, we'll talk about that. Um, the one other thing that I've, um, just, I guess, give you a heads up, and when we get to the warrant article discussion, uh, in future weeks, um, we'll consider this with, as we would with any other article, but I will have an article, um, for the chiefs, um, talk about 66, year 66 and 67, they both would, they both are very interested in, uh, continuing their employment, um, you know, they're both in their early 60s, 62, I believe, but they are interested in, in working, uh, at least 66 and 67, um-
67's the maximum, isn't it?
Um, I don't think so, I think, I, 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 maybe in, uh, past experience, I, I, Chuck anyway, has talked about even going, even having a discussion about going further. I'm not saying that that's what he's bound and determined to do, but he, he doesn't wanna necessarily limit it to 67, so. So I'll have those articles, and we can talk about them, um-
When the articles due, when, they do like the fourth, when they do?
This Thursday.
So I thought, okay, okay, fourth, okay.
Yeah, one article's due Thursday at four, we won't accept them at 4:15 anymore.
No.
And you're gonna put in the one on stabilization?
I will, absolutely. But, uh, I'll probably leave the dollar amount blank, but I think we talked about a hundred thousand.
We did.
And in terms of the timing of those articles for this upcoming town meeting, is that because of the typical duration of contract? If you add that to when their current contract expires, it puts them close enough to those dates? Were they, are interested in knowing sooner rather than later, or just?
Um, it's really because of the process, you have to, so we do a home rule petition, then it has to go through the legislature, and my understanding is, it's, it's, it's gonna sit in the legislature for a year, really, before they take it up. Um, so now we're talking at the point where they're about 64, um, by the time that gets picked up, so. It's, now is the time to, to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because of that.
And, and just, just for, for clarification, and I don't mean anything by this, but it, it doesn't, it's not a-
Obligatory.
It's not a vested right that that employment's continued to 67, it just gives them, it gives the town the opportunity-
Yeah.
-to extend their contracts. I don't want folks at home thinking that, that, you know, that it's, it's a tenured job, that's not the point of this, it's just, it is mandatory 65 for public safety, unless you get this legislative waiver, and I thought it was two years, but it could be longer.
I'm not, I'm not positive, I-
I don't know, I just always heard it referenced as two years.
Chuck was interested in talking about longer, and I'm not sure if-
But it could be, yeah.
There's a limit or not, huh?
It just gives us the option.
I think it's 70 for police chief.
Is it? Okay.
Anything else?
Oh, we do have a executive session, yeah.
Before we adjourn to executive session? Okay. Well, we're not coming back out of executive session. Um, thank you very much, everyone, everyone for joining us. Um, now we do a roll call to go into executive session. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares. I, I so declare. Scott Bugby, aye.
Chimleyhead, aye.
Jeff Palumboi.
Thank you.